This will be our for the start of the meeting. Everybody's got their smiling faces on, this is good. Welcome to our March 5, 2015 Gilbert Town Council Meeting. I call the meeting to order. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. And Councilmember Daniels, who will lead us in the pledge?
We have a scout here named Scott that will lead us in the pledge.
We invite those in council chambers to please arise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Councilmember Daniels, who else is here with the scouts?
Thank you. We are so glad our scouts came tonight, we needed them. Scott, if you wouldn't mind starting us off, give us your name, your rank, and your troop, and we'll have you pass the mic down.
My name is Scott Wood. I'm First Class, and I'm Troop 841.
My name is Zachary Showmeyer. I am part of Troop 88, and I am a scout.
Hi, my name is Steven Showmeyer. I'm a First Class, and I'm from Troop 88.
Hello, my name is Dylan Showmeyer, and I am a Life Scout from exactly the same Troop 88.
Thank you. We have three scouting brothers here, which I think is very neat tonight. They clearly all work together to accomplish all these merit badges. We, of course, appreciate their leaders, parents, always supporting them. Not a week goes by that we don't have a scout or scout troop volunteering in our community. We appreciate what great leaders you are, and thanks for coming tonight.
The invocation for this meeting will be offered by Pastor Tom Carlini of the Life Link Church. Pastor Tom, thank you for coming. As he's coming forward, as noted on the agenda, the invocation may be offered by a person of any religion, faith, belief, or non-belief, as well as council members. A list of volunteers is maintained by the town clerk. An interested person should contact the clerk for further information. Pastor Tom, please.
Let's bow our heads and pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you tonight that we're able to gather here in the Town Council Hall to do town business. Father, we ask you to guide and to lead our town mayor, our town council members, our city officials, in doing town business and promoting the good of Gilbert. We ask you to bless every single person that is in this hall chambers tonight. We ask you to show yourself mightily to them. We thank you for all that you're going to do here tonight, and we love you. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Tom. Our town clerk will conduct the roll call.
Mayor John Lewis.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jordan Ray. Councilmember Eddie Cook.
Here.
Councilmember Jen Daniels.
Here.
Councilmember Victor Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Bridgette Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Jared Taylor.
Here.
Coram, Miss President.
Thank you. As we heard on the roll call, our Vice Mayor Jordan Ray is not here this evening, and to help, the mayor, in his place will be Councilmember Eddie Cook. And so, to council members, if there are certain items that you wanted to have discussed, please pass them on to Councilmember Cook. Before we get to Agenda Item Number One, Kurt, if you could come forward. Oh, you're ready. Just a few announcements for those who are here in council chambers, and those who are watching on cable or through a web link. Invitation will be for you to look on our website and get the additional details, but at a high level, we invite you to come on March 19 to the downtown concert Casey and the Blues Band. Next slide. On Saturday, March 21, at Freestone Park, will be the salute, a Soldier 5K Run. Community is invited to that. March 28, from 8:00 a.m. to noon, at Freestone Park, the Kapow Superhero Adventure Run. Now, representing our Parks Recreation Department, we'll ask the camera to maybe focus right in center stage here. Melanie Dykstra is wearing superhero stockings. And Rod, if you could come forward. Rod, if you can hold up your legs, too. Stockings would be more. And then, if the camera wanted to focus on the mayor, I have my Batman stockings, and I'll be putting on for the Kapow Superhero. And Melanie, by the microphone, is it something you just gave to the town manager that needed to be announced? What is it you just gave to him?
Well, I'm honoring the town manager with Captain America socks. Have tiny wings on them. My cape is cooler. But, we did feel he deserved a bit of pair of socks. The rest of the council will receive theirs at the next council meeting, but we encourage everyone to register for the Kapow Superhero Run, because this is what you get when you register.
And back to the camera. Patrick, if you could hold those up one more time.
I'd like to consult the town attorney as to whether or not I can be forced to wear these.
Yes, as was just mentioned by the council, it's in your contract. It's in your contract. Okay, thank you. The next slide. Saturday, April 11, upcoming Global Village Festival. It will be one of our great days, and I'll just insert Councilmember Peterson. I know you'll give us more details. This is also our Dream Team Service Day for City. Please, next. And then, the Gilbert School of Rocks will be taking place on that Saturday afternoon, April 11, from 1:00 to 4:00 at Bergy's. We had the first round last Saturday, great event. Twelve high school local bands competed, and it was a wonderful community event. Thank you. We now turn to Councilmember Jared Taylor. Agenda item number one. If you could give us the details, and then I understand we have a special guest here that you will introduce.
Mayor, we do, thank you. Hundred and fifty years ago yesterday was the inauguration, the second inauguration of President Abraham Lincoln. And we love American history in Gilbert. We love superheroes, like Abraham Lincoln, as well as some of the others in the Kapow Run. But this one's for real, and he did some wonderful things, and it's fun to recognize that. He was the first president in 32 years to actually have been re-elected for a second inaugural address. And as you know, this is one of the most quoted addresses in all of American history. Some people say it's the greatest speech any American ever gave. It's one of the two addresses that's inscribed in the Lincoln Memorial, if you've been to Washington, D.C., and viewed that beautiful memorial. The other one is, of course, the Gettysburg Address. And it was given at a time of great distress in 1865, as you know. The Civil War was wrapping up. It was in Washington, D.C. It was very wet. It had been raining for about two weeks. The whole place was muddy. And Washington, D.C. is not like what you see today. You could visit every major building in about an afternoon. There was only one Smithsonian. They had put the skeleton structure on top of the Capitol, but it didn't have the skin on it yet. The Freedom Statue was being built. But, you know, everyone thought that this was a time when the North can rub it into the South, right? The North was going to win the war. Everyone pretty much knew, and things were wrapping up at the time. And the South, there was just lots of bitterness and lots of acrimony. And as you know, John Wilkes Booth was trying to kidnap the president. He failed, but he was actually at this inaugural address with four other of the conspirators that the following month helped him assassinate the president. So it's interesting to know, and, you know, given the climate there, what would you say as a president? President Washington, when he was inaugurated for the second time, he didn't even give a speech, he just acknowledged it. Jefferson gave a very positive upbeat speech, but Lincoln gave a speech that no one really knew what to do with at the time. The newspapers were just kind of tepid. Some didn't like it, some thought it was nice, and the French newspapers actually picked up on it and said some really nice things about it. But, one person in particular that was an agitator throughout the whole of the Civil War experience was Frederick Douglass. As you know, he was a former slave, and very critical of President Lincoln, but also very supportive at other times. Well, after the inaugural address, he tried to get into the White House to see the president, but the people at the door says, "We've been given instructions that no blacks are to come into the White House." And he said, "Well, I'm a good friend of President Lincoln's." And they said, "Nope, that's our instructions." And he found somebody else, and he says, "Hey, can you run in there and tell President Lincoln that Frederick Douglass is here? I'd like to say hi to my old friend." And so, this young man went in and told President Lincoln, "Hey, Frederick Douglass is trying to get in, but they won't let him through the front door. They're giving him a hard time." So President Lincoln says, well, he turned to one of the security and says, "Hey, make sure you let this gentleman in, I want to talk to him." So they went out, and they found Mr. Douglass, and they brought him in. And he came in, and as President Lincoln saw him coming down the hallway, he says, "Douglass, my friend." And he brings him in and shakes his hand warmly, and he asked him, "Well, what did you think about my address?" And Frederick Douglass said, "Well, I don't want to take your time," and, you know, he wanted to be respectful, just shake his hand, and he said, "No, no." And he looked him in the eye, and he says, "I really would like to know, what did you think of my address?" And Frederick Douglass looked at him, and he says, "Mr. President, those were sacred And he got it, you know, he understood the message that most of America actually missed. But because of his background, and how strongly he fought, you know, the evil of slavery, he really understood this message that President Lincoln used to sort of all the acrimony and the divisiveness in that Civil War. Anyways, and we hold a lot of these values here in the town of Gilbert. Certainly, the council supports many of these values, all of these wonderful values in this speech. And the Human Relations Commission, of which I'm a liaison, also supports these values of unity and, you know, traditional American values. So we happen to have a wonderful guest tonight to recite the second inaugural address, which has gone down in American history as one of the most profound things that we've heard. President Lincoln, would you mind joining us and sharing with us once again these sacred words?
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Mayor Lewis. It's a pleasure to be here. I have two apologies first. Number one, it's been 150 years since I said this, and so I will not be reciting it, I will have to read it. And number two, I apologize for the hat. We wanted to recreate what it really was like on that rather blustery March day, about like it is today in Washington, D.C. And so, I have to wear my hat, because otherwise my beard might fall off. Thank you for setting that stage, because this is a very inspirational discourse. Fellow countrymen, at this second appearing to take the oath of the presidential office, there is less occasion for an extended address than there was at the first. Then, the statement somewhat in detail of a course to be pursued seemed fitting and proper. Now, at the expiration of four years, during which public declarations have been constantly called forth on every point and phase of the great contest, which still absorbs the attention and engrosses the energies of the nation, little of that which is new could be presented. The progress of our arms, upon which all else chiefly depends, is as well-known to the public as to myself, and it is, I trust, respectfully, satisfactory, and encouraging to all. With high hope for the future, no prediction in regard to it is ventured. And I must insert here, just to put it in proper historical context, it's just been 30 days since Congress voted the 13th Amendment, which abolished slavery. It will be another nine months before it is actually ratified and made part of the Constitution. It is just 36 days from this day until Robert E. Lee surrenders, but the hostilities will continue for another almost three months to the end of May. Back into my speech. On the occasion corresponding to this four years ago, all thoughts were anxiously directed at the impending Civil War. All dreaded it, all sought to avert it. While the inaugural address was being delivered from this place, we voted all together to saving of the Union without war. Insurgent agents were in the city seeking to destroy it without war, seeking to dissolve the Union and divide the effects by negotiation. Both parties deprecated war, but none of them, but one of them would make war rather than let the nation survive, and the other would rather accept war than let the nation perish. And the war came. One-eighth of the population were colored slaves, not distributed generally over the Union, but localized in the southern part of it. These slaves constituted a particular and powerful interest. All knew that this interest was somehow the cause of the war. To strengthen, perpetuate, and extend this interest was the object for which the insurgents would rend their Union even by war, while the government claimed no right to do more than to restrict the territorial enlargement of it. Neither party accepted, expected for the war, the magnitude or the duration which it has already attained. Neither anticipated that the cause of the conflict might cease with or even before the conflict itself would cease. And again, I must insert a little history. I had declared the Emancipation Proclamation nearly two years before, and just the June before, last June, I signed a bill which eliminated or repealed all of the fugitive slave laws. Each party looked for an easier triumph, and the result less fundamental and astounding. Both read the same Bible and prayed to the same God, and each invokes his aid against the other. It may seem strange that any man should dare to ask a just God's assistance in wringing their bread from the sweat of the other man's faces, but let us judge not, that we be not judged. The prayers of both could not be answered; that of neither has been fully answered. The Almighty has His own purposes. Quote, "Woe unto the world because of offenses, for it must needs be that offenses come, but woe unto that man by whom the offense cometh," close quote. If we shall suppose that American slavery is one of those offenses which, in the providence of God, must needs come, but which, having continued through His appointed time, He now wills to remove, and that He gives to both North and South this terrible war as the woe due to those by whom the offense came, which we discern therein any departure from those divine attributes which the believers in a living God always ascribe to Him. Finally, we do hope, fervently we do pray, that this mighty scourge of war may speedily pass away. Yet, if God wills that it continue until all the wealth piled by the bondsman 250 years of unrequited toil shall be sunk, and until every drop of blood drawn with the lash shall be paid by another drawn with the sword. As was said 3,000 years ago, so still it must be said, quote, "The judgments of the Lord are true and righteousness altogether," close quote. With malice toward none and charity for all, with firmness in the right as God gives us to see the right, let us strive on to finish the work we are in, to bind up the nation's wounds, to care for Him who shall have borne the battle, and for His widow, and for His orphan, to do all which may achieve and cherish a just and lasting peace among ourselves and of all nations. Thank you.
And Councilmember Taylor, thank you for organizing that. We will continue with our meeting with communication from citizens. Councilmember Cook, do we have any requests tonight?
Mayor, tonight, we do not, but you may want to ask.
Is there anyone in council chambers that wish to participate in this part of the agenda? Thank you. We'll move to the consent calendar. Councilmember Cook, do we have any requests from council members?
Mayor, we're going to pull Agenda Item Number 10. And with that, I would like to move that we approve Agenda Items 2 through 9, 11 through 16, and we'd like to move Agenda Item Number 20. And I would like to move that we appoint Angela Booker as an alternative member to the Arts, Culture, and Tourism Board to fill the term ending January 31, 2016.
Thank you. Before, I ask for a second, just to clarify, the note I see is that Agenda Item 3 has been removed from the agenda. Is that correct, our town clerk? And so, can that motion include removing Agenda Item Number 3?
I'd like to move that we remove Agenda Item Number 3.
Thank you. With that motion, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. With that motion, second, please vote. Those items are approved with a six oh vote. Thank you. Agenda Item Number 10, who wish to make some comments?
Councilmember Taylor.
Mayor, if I may, just digging in a little bit to the contract here, and some of the bill rates initially seemed a little bit high. I kind of dug into them, and one of them was resolved. There's a couple of, there's an Assistant Project Managing Coordinator, which had about $102, $103 bill rate. I think I got my questions answered on that one. There was an inspector that had about $100-some-odd bill rate that seemed a little bit high as well. Digging into that one, that still seems like that's a little bit higher than what, you know, maybe the taxpayer should be paying for. I do like, you know, a lot of the agreement here, I'm happy to support it, but I guess my question is for our town manager. Since this is kind of a retro-chu-ing-up, is it worth giving us another council meeting to maybe go back and see if we can get a more market rate on that inspector bill rate?
Mayor, Councilmember Taylor, this is all after the fact pursuant to the terms of the original contract. Some of it has to do with the water delays we had from the two major storm events that delayed some of the issues at the construction site. We could certainly talk to them, but I don't know that we would get any traction in regards to this issue before you tonight. But we can certainly be very mindful and watchful of rates going forward, and making sure that we negotiate very favorable rates for our town.
To the town attorney, if we did move it to March 26, other than we do want those that work with the town to be paid in a timely manner, but is there an issue from a legal standpoint you would be aware of?
Mayor, members of the council, not from a legal standpoint. There may be, a good question to Mr. Morgan would be, you know, practically speaking, how this might affect.
Sure. And yes, we're not wanting to infect a business, so other comments from the council? Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, I just wanted to add my voice of agreement to Councilmember Taylor on this. Also dug into the numbers a little bit, and I want to thank Jack, I'm not going to say his last name right, Girac, am I saying that right? He answered a lot of my questions, I really appreciate it. Explained that only 37% of the build rate actually goes to salaries. But basically, using all those numbers and researching with the BLS.gov website versus a private sector website, Salary.com, and just looking around, it does seem like the inspector rate is anywhere from 30 to 230% high compared to other things I've seen. So, I think it's at least worth having a conversation, if it's not going to cause any harm. I mean, I would appreciate that, and I'm sure the taxpayers would, too.
Thank you. Councilmember Daniels?
I don't disagree with having those types of conversations, but I think the right time to have them is before you award the contract, because these are the rates set forth within the parameters of the contract that we did approve as a council previously. So, again, I don't disagree with the concept of going forward. I do question maybe our reactiveness rather than proactiveness as we move forward with this type of contract. We did agree to these types of numbers with an original vote.
To our town attorney one more time, as you heard what the town manager said, so the work has been done. We did have a contract. It could be, we could be asking town leadership to just go back and confirm the rates, and maybe even to have one more round of, in a sense, negotiated after the fact, which may or may not be appropriate, but there's still a contract, so do you have any additional counsel before we proceed?
Mayor, members of the council, there's no harm in continuing to discuss the matter, to see, to check the numbers, see they're consistent with the contract, and discuss anything that's perhaps not as we thought it ought to be.
Thank you.
Not that there's any suggestion of that, but it doesn't hurt to review the matter again.
So if we were to have a motion to continue this to March 26, that would be appropriate? Or, from a legal standpoint, not inappropriate, I should say?
From a legal standpoint, not inappropriate, but practically speaking, I can't address that.
Good, thank you.
Mr.?
Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, if I understand the packet correctly, there have been some negotiations related to this change order. So, in fact, there are some differences between what's come forward and what might have come forward based on previous contract and agreements. So, I don't think it's inappropriate to negotiate something like this. And furthermore, we are being asked to approve something here, so obviously, there is a step to be taken. And so, with that in mind, I think it's worth doing that. And to Councilmember Daniel's point, I take responsibility if there's things I've missed in previous packets. But my failure to notice it sooner doesn't absolve me from my duty of trying to help as much as possible the taxpayer later, if I recognize.
Thank you. Would you like to make a motion? Councilmember Peterson?
Sure. I move to continue this item to the next regularly scheduled council meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
That's approved with a six oh vote. Thank you. We move to the public hearing. And Councilmember Cook, do we have any requests from council members to speak on 17, 18, and 19?
Mayor, I did not receive any requests to speak, or any communication from any citizen to speak.
Then I will open the public hearing on Agenda Items 17, 18, and 19, and I will close the public hearing on Agenda Items 17, 18, and 19, and entertain a motion.
Mayor, I would like to move that we approve Agenda Items 17, 18, and 19.
Is there a second?
Second.
With that motion, second, please vote.
With that motion, second, please vote. Thank you.
Mayor, can I just make a quick thank you to all involved on 17? I know a lot of hours went into that. I know SBA, the chamber, staff, spent a lot of time on that, and I think they're all improvements. And I'm just, I want everyone to know how grateful I am. I'm sure we all are for that work.
Thank you. Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, that's what I was going to say. Just appreciate, there's a lot of work, even though this went like that up here, tons of work in here, and appreciate all that.
Thank you. To the council, and this really would fall under future meetings, but I'm going to tie it into 19. 19 had to do with an ordinance related to dogs and cats, but specifically what was happening was with dogs. We have had some feedback from citizens this week about some challenging situations with Freestone Park, with some feral cats that are in that area. And so just as an FYI to the council, Town Leadership is doing some follow-up on that, and not at this point any ordinances that we would need to be talking about, but there will be some feedback coming back to council. Thank you. Agenda Item 21, Board Commission and Committee Reports. Councilmember Daniels?
I'd just like to publicly thank our town staff for all of their work with Youth Government Days that happened yesterday. We had, I believe our final count was 47 high schoolers that were here and took over Town Hall, and they did a tremendous job, in part because of the fantastic training that they had in the morning. And I know that this is valuable experience for them, that they'll carry with them. They will remember that day and the opportunity. We did have a great mayor that sat in your chair. He was a little more serious than you are, Mayor, and I just want you to know, I do prefer your style, and he did loosen up over time as well. But he... Our mayor and council did a great job. There were six female council members, and the mayor was a male. And I thought we could probably get used to that, huh, Bridgette?
Yes, we could.
Okay. So anyway, great day, and very much appreciate all the work that was done by staff to make that happen.
For the council to know, similar to last year, the high school students who were doing the simulated Town Council Meeting, the Town Manager did tell me that I could take a year vacation again. And our mayor that was part of Student Government Days would do just fine. So I take that as a compliment. I... Thank you. Other... Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, I just want to report on a great event and thank all who came to the We Are Gilbert Breakfast. We talked, our theme was joining the dream team of service. And Mayor, a special thanks to you for being there and the words you offered. And I'm just going to point out Chief Dorn, who was there, because I failed to at the breakfast. Thank you for being there. And there were other wonderful leaders there, and I can't name them all, but I just want to thank everyone for that. We've already had some very positive feedback from the nonprofits, wonderful organizations like House of Refuge, United Food Bank. They've already told me that as a result of the event, they've had new connections made and people volunteering and wanting to help and contribute and support them. So we're very grateful for that. And Mayor, one other related item to that, in I guess about a month, April 11, it's a Saturday, of course, as usual, we have We Are Gilbert Day coming up with many opportunities to volunteer and serve those around you. We have opportunities ranging from house and yard work for our dear seniors to improvements in our great schools. And so Mayor, to sign up, people can go to gilbertcan.org. Another great organization we partner with has hosted that for us for many years, and we're grateful to them. But gilbertcan.org, you can click on the volunteer link at the top of the page and see the opportunities there. I will warn you, though, they're filling up fast this year, and so I just invite everyone to get involved. And there's nothing better than to volunteer, to give to someone else. You don't have any obligation. It's for the benefit of another. That is a fantastic feeling. And so I just encourage everyone to get involved in that. Thank you, Mayor.
I'll add just a couple of sentences. This Four City event took place on Tuesday morning at the Boys and Girls Club, and it was a very creative idea as part of the main theme. Those in attendance representing business, faith group leaders, education leaders, were at 12 different tables, and there were 12 of our local nonprofit groups. And it was a baseball theme, and they did a fast pitch. And so they went to each table and gave a quick summary of some of the needs they would have, both on that Dream Gilbert, Dream Team Gilbert Day on Saturday, April 11, and needs in the future. And so very creative, very well done. And as you said, there were a lot of enthusiastic volunteers that signed up on the spot and right after. Thank you. Other updates from Boards and Commissions? Thank you. We will turn to the Town Manager for our current event updates.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Mark Schocipic, Deputy Town Manager, did point out that these are the Cardinals' dress blue uniform colors, so I do appreciate that, and I now like these socks more than I originally did. Updates, Water Tower Plaza. You may have noticed a lot of maintenance work going on with our water features up there. Parks and Rec Department is wrapping up the repairs at Water Tower Plaza. They've tried to keep the impact to our public minimal while they bring some of our features up to speed. They expect to have everything fully operational by the evening of March 7, and we wanted to pass along special thanks to our building maintenance staff, Eddie Wasnica and Robert Lupe, for all the hard work on the project. Also wanted to recognize Ken Morgan and our Public Works Department crews, who now have all of our water features in the Heritage District operational once again after trying to track down some issues with a couple of those. So thank you, Ken, if you'd thank all your staff for involved in that. We're glad to see them back online. Also, we'll bring them, ask them to come back to our council meeting, but the Gilbert Adaptive Recreation Cheer Team competed against 15 teams to win the gold medal again in the state cheer competition, so we're very proud of them. And if it's okay with you, we'd like to bring them back to a council meeting and have them do their gold medal cheer for you, Mayor. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. This morning, many of the council members were able to attend the Employee of the Year Program. And would that be something we bring the six back for, or should I ask you to give just a quick summary of that right now?
No, I would love to have them here, Mayor, and recognize them.
For any council members who were not able to attend, a copy of this has been put into your slot, and so thank you. Move to the next item, current events from other council members. I think we covered it, and I think I even covered the mayor updates, and I didn't even mention anything about baseball and that Ben... Okay, we'll just leave it at that. Thank you for attendance and appreciate Team Gilbert, all the efforts that you made. Meeting adjourned.